Right, well, I think we have everybody that's gonna make it on the board. I know Tom and Irv both cannot, for different reasons, make it tonight. And so, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I think the rest of us are all here. So we should probably get started. I show seven o'clock, 7:01 maybe. And Debbie, if you would, call the meeting door.
Tended to noted.
Thank you. And let's see, first up, we have our agenda review. It's a really short agenda. I sent out a text indicating sort of why that was. You know, there, I know we had some things lined up for this work session from our last board meeting. But given everything that's going on, it just seems prudent to do only the things that really were time critical. And after talking with Scott, you know, this was kind of it. So, and in fact, we actually now, as you probably all saw from the note from Dan, don't even need to move into exact session either. So we can strike five and six. I don't know that we have to, you know, we can just say that we're gonna do that and approve the agenda if we want. Anybody have suggestions for changes or otherwise I'd accept a motion to prove it with the bottom of the patient that we won't need to go into the next session?
I move to approve the agenda with the changes.
So moved?
I'll second.
Moving to second and any further discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, Debbie?
All right, Jonathan?
About yes?
Janet?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Lori?
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
Okay. All right, well, first up, we have a superintendent update from Scott. So take us, take it away.
Thanks, Jonathan, and good evening, everyone. And I just wanna be the first one to say it's, it's really nice to see you this evening. And I know you all have been through a lot as well. And it's really incredible that this is, you know, the third crisis that we've been dealing with in less than a year. And, you know, just the odds of that happening are just so slim to begin with. I almost, I just feel fortunate to be in Silver Falls and to work with each of you. So I have some updates for you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And I have both presentations I rolled into the same slide deck. And let's see if I can pull it up here. Let's see. Hmm. Can you guys see that? Are we good? Okay.
It's a little small, Scott.
It's a little small. Let me exit out and a little bit. Just one second. How about, how about that? Is that a little better?
That's way better.
Okay, so I have some slides here. I have two things to go over with you tonight. Number one is an update, just with the implications of the ice storm. I wanna brief you all on how we're doing as a district and what implications that has for some of our timelines. The second thing and most important thing I wanna bring up to you is I wanna deliver to you the final recommendation of the boundary that was drawn for the attendance areas of Mark Twain Elementary and Robert Frost Elementary. And I'll get to that second. And it's really important that I deliver that information to you because it's something that you'll be voting on in the March board meeting. And so having said that, I'm gonna go ahead and start out with the status report of how we're doing since the ice storms. And I wanna just address three questions, and I'll go over the status of where we are utilities wise in our facilities across the district, what our priorities are right now, and then what that means for reopening timelines. And so right now, this is the most up to date grid that I have. And it shows, you know, almost our entire district is back online. Our district phones are still down. They're working on that. Prattam's still having an issue with their phones. But those issues are relatively minor versus where we were a week ago. Comes as no surprise that Victor Point is our biggest concern right now. Of course, they're down with the whole trifecta, the power, internet and phone. Even cell service is spotty. And so, but we continue to see tons of work trucks there. And I have to say that, you know, everywhere I drive throughout the district, I see nothing but, you know, crews out there trying to get power restored as soon as possible. So hats off to them as well. So we, what we know right now is that a majority of our, our utilities have been restored to our facilities. And that cleanup is, is ongoing. And, and a lot of our campuses look, are looking really good. The high school looks great. I was just there a few days ago. The hardest hit communities that we've had are Butte Creek, Silver Crest, Victor Point and Scott's Mills. And even though utilities are on in all but Victor Point, we still do not know the extent of how many of our families are cut off from, from the rest of the world without power internet. So those are the unknowns right now that we're trying to ascertain what the impact is on our families in our, in our communities, namely our rural communities. And right now, at least for today, tomorrow and Wednesday, our schools are reaching out to families trying to ascertain exact numbers of who has internet and who doesn't, because we're still in a comprehensive distance learning model. And we need to know how many kids can access teaching and learning and how many can't. Because once we understand that, then we can start coming up with a contingency plan for those kids. And so even though we have a pretty good idea that we have probably a large number of the families at the Victor Point area that are gonna need some alternate location, we just need to make sure that those numbers are accurate. And we're already going to work on that contingency plan. But the estimates that we've heard in terms of restoring power back to that community can be, have been as, as few as two to three weeks, as much as five weeks. And that's a pretty sobering number, if you think about it, to go without power, internet and phone. And so, so the first couple of days, several days this week will be to, to, to reach out to those families. And so the priorities for this week, well, we, we will resume in a CDL format. And any staff without power have contacted their principals. And we have alternate sites set up for our staff to come in and set up their workspace. Particularly for those staff at Victor Point. And we designated an area at the high school for them to work. All principals held staff meetings this morning to go over a variety of things, one of which was to talk about what's gonna be done to move the grading day. And each building is coming up with their plan. And, and you probably already saw our joint statement from SFDA and, and SFSD that went out on, on Friday. The focus for this week, at least for the first several days, as I said, is to reconnect with families and to, to, you know, ascertain, you know, students availability and, and readiness to participate in school. We do have a wing of the high school that we have designated in case we need to start bringing students in. Although we're also battling with whether or not roads are open to get buses in. So that's an ongoing process as well. Lippi around the district has been canceled, but we have some areas where schools are able to offer that. We have our specialized programs, for example, are, are, our programs who really wanna try to keep running if at all possible. And so those are being made on an individual basis. And so a lot of this, you know, that happened a week ago, we had to shut down for five days, as you know, has implications on our reopening timelines. But really what it affects is just our K5. There's no way I would have been okay with having teachers come back today, the 22nd, after seeing the destruction that the ice storm left. We still have families digging out of this, dealing with all manner of different things. And so teachers will start resuming, coming into their buildings to set up their classrooms this coming Monday. And that puts us out on the K5 timeline one week. So teachers will return on March 1st. Their orientation week where they start bringing in groups of students will start March 8th, and then hybrid instruction will start on March 15th. In grade six through eight, there was no change in the timeline and high school no change. So, so in terms of, you know, having this, you know, weather event, it, it only implicated the, the elementary grades and put us back a week. Now, it, we do need to try to get a better timeline on when we expect power to be restored at Victor Point, because that will start to affect when we bring kids back at the high school as well. But we expect that to be fixed well before the April date. And so so that's a brief overview of where we are as a district. I would say it's, it's really remarkable how far we've come in, in, in a week to get things up and running. And, and the impact to our facilities has been relatively minor. I believe all we had in terms of damage was a flattened fence at Robert Frost and, and one section of fence at Central Howell. Dan and I have driven the entire area and visited each one of our facilities. And also hats off to our crews that have been out there, our district crews cleaning up the, the mess that was left. Really sad to see a lot of the trees that had to be removed at the high school, but you know, nobody was hurt except for a custodian that, that had a little accident, but hope he's doing better. And having said that, I'll take questions if you have them for me.
Anybody with any questions on this? Yeah, Kelly?
Yeah, just a quick question. Did you, you mentioned that Victor Point is probably gonna take a little bit longer to reopen, just purely because of location. And, you know, what is, what the devastation out there? Did you say that that was if, if depending on when Victor Point opens, that will depend on when the high school opens?
No, well, well, put it this way, we, we know how many families are cut off from internet. Because as a public school district, we have to ask, to offer access. So
Right.
One of our contingency plans is to bus all 200 kids to the high school, so they can at least get access to teaching and learning. Because they can't anywhere else. And so that's a worst case scenario. Hopefully it doesn't, that doesn't happen. We're just gonna have to see what transpires over the next couple of days. But if, if Victor Point is out of power for five weeks, we're gonna have to have some place to put the kids.
Right.
Will is set to open last. And so that would be the viable place. I'll, I'll continue to update all of you on, on developments. We're not there yet. But it's just important that I want you to understand that we do have contingencies that we're working on. That kids need to have access to learning. That's the problem.
Right, okay.
So if we need to bring him into one of our town schools, we'll need to do that. Get into a situation where we have to decide which school community needs to remain in distance learning, so that our kids at Victor Point can just have access.
Right.
Don't have access from home in a remote location. They may need to go to a different facility to make sure that, that they do. So it's a really complicated problem to solve. And we'll just have to see what transpires over the next week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, very complicated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just really concerned about, you know, our high school kids getting back to school, you know? And I, I, you know, it, it, it's a rock and a hard place, but if there's, if there's any way that, you know, we can keep on schedule with that and come up with another solution if needed for the kids.
And it could be Shelley.
Okay, okay.
Very well could be. I just, I just, it's important that we have all the options in front of us. And
Yeah.
And, you know, since the high school is set to open last, that would be a viable option.
Yeah.
And because certainly we wouldn't wanna disrupt those kids coming back to hybrid learning either. But
Right.
I, way, I think if we get into a situation and the Victor Point power isn't, isn't, you know, restored, that
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna have to come together as a community and decide, you know, how we're gonna help those families.
Yeah. It's food for thought, for sure. From here on out, you know, to come up, to get creative and come up with some, you know, maybe multiple solutions, but no, in ahead of time, significantly ahead of time. So that's good. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Yeah.
You're welcome, Shelley. I feel pretty confident we can come up with a plan that works for everyone.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Others, other questions?
Other questions? Well, I've got, it's not really so much a question, but a, but a comment. I was really happy to see that the only implication to our return to hybrid was the one week delay on the K5. I think that's perfectly understandable. You know, we haven't even had a chance to do the final walkthroughs in the blueprint, you know, business to try to get that finished. So, I mean, it makes sense. But I was really happy to see that it didn't have any other impact. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other questions?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so on the slide deck, I have the second presentation. I wanted to go over with you all the final boundary recommendation that I have for you. I wanna talk about a couple of things here. One is to reiterate that I'm sharing information with you now, and, and you have all the information that we've gone over since this process started. It's all on our website. And I sent you the address to the exact tab. It's very well laid out, very clear. And that's all the supporting documentation that we've used throughout this entire process that supports this boundary recommendation of the work group. So, so and you, you all will vote on that at the March board meeting. And the reason why I really wanted to have this board work session tonight is there's a lot of things that still have to be done that are dependent on, on the board voting to approve this recommendation that we need to get started on. You know, now more than ever is when kids need to start a continuous six-year path, if they're in kindergarten in one school. And we've got to get started now. And so thank you for allowing me to, to, to be able to present this tonight. I wanna start back on, on what the compelling reasons for and why we even started down this road of, of considering a boundary. And here with a recommendation. And that is that we had a K2 school and a 3-5 school that had been in existence for a while. And, and a lot of the work that was done around the thinking to reconfigure was you know, a few years ago, I updated the date here. I believe it was back in 2017 or 2018. But the, and the board did not vote on whether or not to go ahead with the reconfiguration. You all did that back in October, when I represented all of the material to you. And really, there's three compelling reasons. And, and the three compelling reasons are, are not earth shattering. They're not surprising at all. They're just all based on evidence and, and clear research that we wanna try to take out that transition from going from one school to the next. After the second grade, that's a critical age, especially for our underrepresented populations. It's an age also where children are learning how to read before they read to learn. And taking out that transition and leaving them in one continuous school that's vertically aligned to, to serve kids along a continuum is where we wanna be as a school district. And that there's so much research, and we know this from the K8s as well, and the K8 model, that if you can take out one transition, kids of future success is directly proportional. So K5 configurations are best practice. There's no mistake there. And our students, we feel strongly need this continuity more than ever, given what's transpired this past year. And this is what the board voted on back in October and gave me the directive to start the work on this. So, so you voted to, to start the work on reconfiguring. And, and the next step was creating the boundary. And so I wanna walk you through what that process looked like. And I'll take you through three of the steps that we took to get to the point where I can bring you a final recommendation. So step one started with forming a superintendent's boundary work group. And that that boundary work group was made up of 21 members. And the 21 members come straight from the community, from the Robert Frost and Mark Twain community, as well as representatives from the Silver Crest area and Butte Creek communities. Our intent was never to start to tinker with the attendance boundaries of, of other school communities. But we also knew that there, there could be scenarios where we might have to take that into account. We wanted to make sure that voices were represented. So the 21 members spanned from teachers to classified staff to parents. We had both representatives from SFDA and OSEA. Michelle was, Michelle Stadly from SFDA and I and Michelle Livingston from OSEA, if I'm remembering correctly. Mayor Palmer was also on the boundary work group and, and also added to, to the depth of knowledge. And it came in really handy. And so the work group's charge was, was fairly straightforward. And that was to deliver a final boundary recommendation to me. We, we had an idea of how many meetings it was going to take, but we didn't have a hard and fast rule. So it took, took us about exactly how many meetings we thought it was going to between five and six is what we thought. And, and we're able to, to meet that timeline. The second step that we took was to develop a process that was totally transparent and highly visible. And which is why I've, I asked each one of our board members to serve on one or two different work group meetings, just as observers of the process. And, and when we get a little bit of time at the end, if you'd like to share what your experience was with that, I'm, I'm sure it would be helpful for your colleagues to hear that as well. And the, the whole design of the process was to have between five and six meetings. We finished in five. But we left the door open to have additional meetings if we needed to. We followed all the public meeting laws, the, the public announcements. We had public comment at each one of our meetings. The entire public SFSD community had access via Zoom to every meeting. And every meeting was recorded and posted on YouTube as well as all the supporting documentation placed directly on our website under the reconfiguration tab. And so for the first three meetings, what we focused mainly on was process. So that was the most important thing to me is to, to develop the process for how the decision was going to be made. And that's when we hired RS2 Consulting, Randy Shield and Rob Saxton, who are two of the most respected administrators in Oregon. And they ran a fantastic process. And very seamless. And their roles were really simple, just to facilitate the process, to allow the boundary work group to, to do its work and to take ownership of the recommendation. And so we went over in the first meeting consensus building. And then in the second meeting, we identified sorry, in the first meeting, we won over consensus and we started to design the community survey. The second meeting, we took those survey results and, and, and analyzed those. We had public comments, of course, in those meetings. We had a presentation of the current boundary map, which you see on the left. And then what we did was we went over the decision-making priorities. So, so what were the most important things that we needed to guide the decision-making process? And there you see them, one through nine there. And you see, number one, that schools have capacity to serve students in the boundary. That, that's true. That, and, and that is an important piece. But one of the things that we worked with the work group on was that that was already going to happen. So if you look at two, three and four, for the priorities of balancing student equity and diversity, balancing class size and balancing socioeconomic status, that actually tied directly back to the original work that was done by the reconfiguration work group of the, the compelling reasons why, what we wanted to achieve coming out of, of the reconfiguration and the boundary. The third meeting, we dug deep into the PSU demographic study. We went over we reached consensus on the decision-making priorities. And that was our first introduction of the Forecast 5 software tool that really was the hero in this whole process, because it really allowed us to take large amounts of information and synthesize those into various scenarios, mapping scenarios. And otherwise, what would have had to happen would be just literally writing things down on Post-its and sorting by, by families and students. And so that really eliminated all that time that would have to go into making index cards for each student, which is really how boundaries are done or were done before programs like Forecast 5 came out. And, and it's something that we already had in our toolbox. The Five Maps tool, because we use it in our business office as well. Some similar things that Steve can talk to. After that, we called a special meeting that wasn't anticipated, but we got feedback along the way and really wanted to make sure that we are boosting engagement with the work group. And that's where we had the implementation of breakout rooms, so that, that the work group could leave the general session and have a little bit more time with a smaller group that wasn't necessarily being televised, where they could have these conversations and feel a little bit more comfortable and then coming back and reporting out. And we found that to be very, very handy. And again, it just goes back to really good instructional practice for differentiating for folks and, and trying to boost, you know, the engagement of, of the entire group. In the fourth meeting, we discussed student transfer rules. We discussed the consideration of phase-in plans. And we also narrowed down the boundary options to three. And we called them C, D and E. And in one of the boundary scenarios, that scenario E, this idea of South Abacoa came up because there was a concern over capacity issue at Mark Twain. And we held two additional listening sessions, one for South Abacoa families. And then the second, the day after for the community, for the entire community. And that was just, we really wanted to be sensitive to make sure that we're getting all of the community feedback that we could that possible to make sure that we're making the most informed decision. And so we're gonna go over that with you in just a minute, what ended up being the boundary recommendation, which was scenario E. The last meeting, again, you know, we had public comment at each meeting. We reviewed the decision-making criteria again. And then we discussed a different boundary scenarios and small groups. And then we reported out after, and then we took a vote. When I say we, I was not included. I was actually very much an observer in the process, which is done on purpose. We really wanted this to be the work group's decision on the recommendation that I could then take to you. And in this recommendation, I did not have to send it back to the work group for any adjustments. And so this really is their work. And, and at least in my estimation, and then in the polling that we got at the, at the last meeting would indicate that, that the work group felt really good about the decision that they made and that they felt they had ownership of the process and that it was organic, transparent and highly visible. And so on scenario E, it was a unanimous vote, except for one individual. We have had an individual in the work group, extremely deep thinker, critical. We have had an individual in the worker of extremely deep thinker, critical thinker. Who was also not opposed to scenario E. But it was a twenty to one. So twenty yes, one no. And I believe, if I remember correctly, it was a no because we we couldn't guarantee whether or not or. We couldn't ascertain whether or not we had. Gone to the furthest lengths possible to get as much feedback as possible, but the group did agree that we. Certainly had gone out of our way to make sure that that we had tried to get as much input as possible. And so here we are in step three. Which is to present the actual scenario to you. It's what we called scenario E. And what we'd like to do is is I'm going to turn it over to Steve in just a second. We're going to walk you through. What the boundary looks like. We're going to take you through the maps that were developed. And different views of those maps. But if you look in the red box here, it'll it'll kind of show you. How closely we got to what we originally wanted as an outcome. And you see there the 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 breakdown of economically disadvantaged. We got almost an an equal representation there. Same thing with our students receiving special services. And and our ELL students. There is a little bit of a difference because some of that is germane to some of the areas that were incorporated into each. Each attendance area for for either Mark Twain or Robert Frost. And so we were able to achieve a balance there as well. Which was one of the guiding principles that we had set up and that was set up a couple of years ago when the. Reconfiguration work group first started on this. Journey. And so having said that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Steve Nielsen. Steve. Has really been an instrumental part in this entire process for not only learning the whole Five Maps program with. Whitney at Five Maps and facilitating that work. But Steve's also the one that brought Five Maps to our attention too. So. I'm going to make sure that I publicly thank him for all of his work in this process too. Steve, can I go ahead and stop screen share and turn it over to you?
Absolutely. Thank you, Scott, and good evening, everybody, and thanks for being here amongst. All the. Challenges we have going right now. So this is actually a process thirty eight, thirty eight months. That's about a thirty eight month journey. So. Jennifer Traeger and I served on a enrollment work group in the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. And we met in December and January. Two thousand seventeen and January two thousand eighteen. And that's when we had the PSU demographics study done and we we studied. A lot of our data, our internal data, knowledge and and kind of grouped out what the PSU study and looked at our needs and. That was an important foundation for. What then became a discussion about Mark Twain and Robert Frost and K five, but also. Larger than that, kind of a. Prep time as we as we knew we were within a year or two, getting it back into long range facility planning as well. In that whole process. So it was an important first step and that 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 work group. Was was run by Superintendent Belando and Jennifer served from the board and we had three community members and a few staff members, couple of principals. Were on that group as well. So we had some good discussion. That group presented to the board March twelfth, two thousand eighteen. And then during the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Another group of people, a work group was assembled and I believe Leslie Roach was on that. On that work group and I don't recall which board member was was on that group, but. That was specifically to study the the two K five situation. And they ultimately came back at the April two thousand nineteen board meeting and. Shared their report and findings and recommended. The K five configurations that Mark Twain and Robert Frost. Due to some of the leadership, the leadership changes and things we had going on last year and the pandemic and all. The two thousand nineteen twenty year, there was it was it was a year of silence on this this matter. There was no no action taken and. Scott came in and and immediately picked back up on this work late summer and. I believe the the the. The material that was presented in April two thousand nineteen was fresh, was was represented. In September and ultimately then you, the board approved the K five configuration or reconfiguration plan. At the October twelfth, two thousand twenty board meeting. That's when we went to work on the next step, which was the boundary, which Scott just. Led led you through what that process looked like and the group and. And the meetings that we had and how that whole thing worked and. I'm here tonight just to share with you the the. The boundary scenario that was officially. Recommended by the work group. And there is a nine page slide deck, PDF slide deck that is linked on the. Special page for the K five boundary work group. That I will share, I will share it on my screen and we'll take it slide by slide and I'll. I'll just take you through it a little bit and explain some of the key areas. And I'll drill down. Part of the problem with the PDF is you lose a little bit of the clarity, but when you call it up on your own screen. You know, between, as you consider this between now and in March eighth. You can drill down. If you go to the bottom of the screen, you can drill drill in or drill out on each of the slides and I'll do that a little bit myself. And if we. Get to the a point where we want to look at some things a little more closely, I am also logged into Five Maps. I've. I'm not an expert, but I've learned enough to where I can call up the. This map and surf around a little bit and and we can look at it from a. You know, a satellite view as well as a street view. So we can keep that in mind as well. So I'll go ahead and and share my screen now. Okay, can everyone see? The Pac-Man map. I like to call it Pac-Man. Everyone get on that and see that? Okay, so this is just, actually, this is the first slide. This is the the broad view of the, this was the existing. Map geographic area of the Mark Twain, Robert Frost area, except for this part we'll talk about. A little bit later here, the the South Abiqua piece that we that was part of this before and Scott discussed that. There's a little bit closer view. Now, this. This this next slide focuses on the Pioneer area. So. The boundary here goes just. Off of 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 Water Street so that. Basically, all of the Water Street and all the way down into the Pioneer neighborhood. Is essentially part of the Robert Frost. School boundary. So this. This here kind of focuses, it's not really cut down a street per se as it is, just to make sure that this whole. Pioneer Park Pioneer area as well as all the way back down Water. Is all part of Robert Frost in green. The only way to get the schools balanced was to make sure that this area was part of Robert Frost because there's so many students that live. Very close to Mark Twain within within walking distance. Now, the general guideline. That we were working with school capacities of four hundred and fifty at Robert Frost. And three hundred and fifty at Mark Twain. And it was it was around a fifty six percent to forty four percent split and that. That could have gone one or two percentage points either direction. So that was just from a capacity standpoint, what we were. What we were kind of working with as a general guideline as we as we looked at some things. So then this this is this ended up, this area was pretty much the same in all the scenarios. Then, as you get back closer to town, you could start to see a little bit of the of the lay of the land here. On, you know, here's here's Water Street and you can see that the line is kind of basically cut. Behind all the housing, kind of on the hill, so to speak. So Abiqua Heights. Is obviously in in Mark Twain, as you can see here, and and their access is out. You know, towards towards two thirteen there. And then everything down and down on the bottom of the hill and and into Water Street, both sides of the road. Go to Mark Twain. So this specific, or excuse me, Robert Frost, this particular cutoff right here is Oak Street. All the way up to. I guess it's third or fourth. All the way down to Coons is what this is right here. This 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 little carve out. So this is Oak. To Coons right here. And then on the north side of the boundary. You can see here that there's the line that runs up. First Street. And then it actually cuts over, I believe this is on Bowtie Lane. And then heads up Second Street. And all of the Milltown neighborhood would then go to Mark Twain. All the way up to about Webb Webb Lake. It's just south of Hobart is this line right here. And you can see on this map, you can see a little closer where the. The schools, I mean, we, I know you know where the schools are, but it's kind of nice to be able to see, you know, here's Mark Twain. And Robert Frost. And then we go a little little closer view of of this Mark Twain area and and Milltown and where the line is here. Back back to this picture here, you could see. That again, there's there's this area just north and. West that would then, you know, go out to the highway and go to to Mark Twain as you get up to Hobart. And and last but not least, another critical part of this of this recommendation was the South Abiqua. So this this area right here, and you'll see it a little bit better on the next slide. Used to be part of this this whole boundary area and would have been part of Mark Twain in this scenario. But the work group. Ultimately recommended to move this part of 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 this of this boundary into the Butte Creek boundary. And you can see it better right here. So this is essentially the area that used to be part of this this. This whole configuration and is now part. Of the Butte Creek boundary. And I believe there were about twenty current students impacted by that and Scott mentioned that there were listening sessions on that once that idea was discussed. Two nights in a row. And ultimately, the work group decided to to go ahead and move this to Butte Creek as Butte Creek has. Decreased in enrollment and has room for growth and. Thinking long term about. The total capacity of these two schools. It gives a little bit more room for. You know, a little bit of breathing room for these two schools here. So the last slide I have here is the demographics. So. One thing that we had to do is when we first started, we had to load all of our student data into Five Maps and this was the first time we used Five Maps. Actually, I was excited for the chance to use it. There's. Five specific tools within Forecast Five and we use Five Cast and Five Cast Plus, which is. The Five Cast Plus is how we help produce our monthly financial statements and do tracking and so forth. And the Five Cast is to do long range financial. Projections. Five Maps was another module that we hadn't used and it this was the perfect opportunity to use it. There's other things we could use it for in the future. So we were new to it, but. It's a great tool and we had a dedicated account representative help us draw lines and go through scenarios. We actually had. Some of our work group members work along. I I set up a call and they they got to work with this person and. And do some tinkering and and that worked out really well. But essentially, one thing that we did originally was we loaded all of the two thousand twenty twenty one data originally. But because of all the. The decrease decrease in enrollment. Due to the pandemic. We wanted to make sure that the data scenario would would hold true. With the the larger numbers that we had last year, which was more like what we would normally have. You see, we had. Seven hundred and forty one total students. It was actually seven sixty three. But because we cut out the South Abiqua, that took out twenty two, I think it was twenty two students, I think I said twenty earlier. Made it seven forty one, six hundred and seventy seven of which live in the boundary. So this year we were. But I I don't have those numbers in front of me, over a hundred less than that and sixty less kindergartners at Mark Twain alone. So we went ahead and loaded the nineteen twenty data for those two schools only and started running the scenarios with that data as well, just to make sure. So this is nineteen twenty data and this is how the demographics break down. You can see. We're almost perfectly at that fifty six forty four split between the two buildings. And you can see that the demographic data is pretty pretty even. Look at. The free and reduced. Special education population ELL and the ethnicity. Data is is not not too not too different and each scenario that we ran. They were they were really pretty close. There wasn't a lot of. A lot of discrepancy, no matter what the scenario was. It really was. How the capacities turned out was where some of those differences were coming, but really the data told us. How things needed to be. We knew that, again, because Robert Frost had a larger capacity, that again, that that Water Street area down into Pioneer. Was really pretty much locked into Robert Frost because of the proximity of. Of the students that live close to Mark Twain, for example. So I'll actually show you one more thing since I. Am logged into. Five Maps. I'll just go ahead and pull this up really quick. You can see. Again, this this boundary scenario here. And these are specifically the 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 Robert Frost, Mark Twain students from nineteen twenty. And you can see, of course, we have. Students that live outside the the boundary, but this is a cluster view. We also have what's called a pin view. But you can kind of just get a better a better feel for. You could see where the mass of of population is here. You know, right here around the school and then down Water and into Pioneer. This kind of gives you a good idea of the of the numbers there. And you could also change this to a satellite view and. One of the reasons I kept this off and the pin view is because it gets really hard to see. The the lines on the map. When you start drilling down, when you have the clusters in here. So that was that was why the the screenshots did not have. Have the the clusters on there. So. But anyway, hopefully that just kind of gives you. You kind of see this in town here, kind of how that. Breaks down. This line here, you can kind of see it on the satellite view. Kind of a cool look. Well, that's really all I had to share. Hopefully, that's. Fairly self explanatory and and I'd be happy to. You know, to. To do some more drill downs if you need to, or just answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you.
One of the things I wanted to add about the South Abiqua area is that those families have a choice. They can. Start at Butte Creek if they like to, or they can remain. In the in town. So just wanted to make sure if that was a question on your mind that you had that answered right off the bat. But we're happy to take questions and go right ahead, Janet.
Could you go back to the slide, Steve, that had that section that was going to Butte Creek? I think it was light blue, but I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right. Section. Few slides back.
So this was the area that used to be part of this this whole Robert Frost, Mark Twain. Geographic area, but yes, this light purple, blue kind of look here. This area that was carved out and is now part of the greater Butte Creek boundary area.
Okay, and where is Scott's Mills on this in in this picture? Just.
Right, right up here.
Okay, okay. And Butte Creek is out, well, you can see my cursor. I'm moving my cursor like you can see it.
Well.
Okay.
We'll go back to this. So Scotch Mills and. But Butte Creek right up in here.
Going to be just just south of Markham.
Right here. Yeah, right about where this two thirteen. Sign is there.
Okay.
Right, right about there. Right, right about there.
You know, this is great. Um you know, our our other agenda item, folks, is just to really talk this through. This is our chance to ask questions. To dig in, to make sure that, you know, if there's concerns that we're talking about them, uh Scott has asked that we. He he'd like this to be adopted as soon as possible and we're we're planning to try to do that. Uh at the next regular board meeting. So I think I think this is a really good opportunity for us. Who to make sure we we do ask those questions if you've got them.
Jennifer.
Um well, first I just want to say um great use of that Forecast Five um resource and and I just. It's nice that we got a great return on investment on that. Um and the. Data that I've seen is really impressive. It's a super powerful tool. So I look forward to even seeing. More from that. That's that's awesome. Um I did also want to say that Leslie and Greg were both on the original. Group that that the work group that proposed this idea. And that carried a lot of weight with me from the beginning that they kind of laid out the the reasoning why this was something to consider. So. That was really um helpful. Um the question that I have is really just more information from Scott about like. You know, this was important that we do this tonight because of the implications down the road. What can you just give us a few more details about the work that has to be done?
Sure. So so the the main issue is the staffing piece. And and we need to move forward on that and that will take a little bit of time, but we want to make sure that the staff. You know, uh number one, have a chance to give input. On on preference and then we need to figure out how many teachers need to be. At each school and who those teachers are and and we want to make sure that they have plenty of time to plan. Uh for that and um. Which is why we wanted to end in February. And even with that, it's an ambitious timeline, but we. We want to make sure that we take care of our staff and make sure that they have their questions answered. They know where they're going. There's already been enough uncertainty, you know, with everything else going on that we really want to make sure that we. We uh do a really thorough job with that. And. Dan, I don't know if you'd like to add to that or um if you want to say anything about the listening sessions we've had or anything.
Yeah, we've had multiple listening sessions with both staffs and you know um. We uh the sooner the better for decision making has come come loud and clear. Um and in our la- uh last couple of meetings, we told them that we wanted to announce uh staffing decisions for the two schools before spring break. And um you should have seen the the thumbs up and the oh, that will be, even if it's maybe a news they didn't want to get. With the release, you know, uh they they thought they really. Thought that that was important. So we uh we had on our agenda to start, actually start in in anticipation of approval. Uh last week that got delayed. We are meeting. Thursday morning to begin the kind of sorting things out so that. We can make make on that promise of of getting that decision done before uh some the those announcements made before spring break.
Once it's approved, of course.
One other thing I would just um since Scott asked, and the meeting that I observed. Um I thought, again, another great return on investment was um the facilitators were really great and um. The meeting that I sat in on was the one where the group. Kind of they they this new idea uh of the the um. Butte Creek, you know, change came up and the facilitators really said, well, how, you know, wh- what? What do we need to do in terms of communication? How how will these families feel and reaching out to the families affected? Um that was really great. And so I appreciate that both um Scott and Steve were able to kind of watch. Um and Dan and 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 everybody in the process, but the facilitators were able to. Um in a really neutral way facilitate those conversations. So I just want to say I appreciated that piece. I'll stop now.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Well, I have.
Yeah, go ahead, Janet.
Oh, sorry, Shelley. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to point out a couple of process pieces. You know, I don't I don't think at this point that as a board member, I would sort of dig into the details and the data. Obviously, that wasn't our role. And you've got to had a really great team together, Scott, to do that and with some really broad representation. So I appreciated that. Um from a process perspective, I I think I'm I'm really encouraged and um and feel really confident about a couple of different things. One, that you had some decision criteria that you set out from the beginning. And that you stuck to those and that they were really equity driven. So I really like that. Um I like the fact that you had those small breakouts. It can be really hard in a big group, especially when you have a few. Folks who are who are super engaged and they're super participatory. It can be hard to draw out some of those other opinions and perspectives. And so I think that breakout decision was excellent. And then finally, I I'm really encouraged by the fact that you had such a great response from your participants, that they felt like the process was really good, that they were included, that that it was really. Uh robust and that and that your final vote was so. Uh so positive. And I think those are all demonstrations to me that the process had a lot of integrity and we can really put a lot of trust in it. So. Um so thank you. I think I think for me, that that goes a long way in terms of making final decisions.
Thank you, Janet. Shelley?
Yeah, I I'm I'm really just going to piggyback on what Jennifer and Janet said. I I attended, I think, two of the meetings. Um and I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the very last one. Where they made the decision, the the whole team made the decision and boy. I just I the other thing I want to point out is the rich dialogue. That was happening with this large group of people. Um I was thoroughly impressed with um the perspectives. Um of all of of everybody. I think they. Because they created the process, you know, they created the norms in the beginning um with the facilitators. I think they felt really safe to be able to say things that are. Critical to say and have to be addressed. Um I would encourage anyone in our community to pull up those meetings. And watch them and listen. That that was how that's how it's supposed to be done. Um yeah, I and I want to thank everybody who came to those meetings every time and was consistent and stayed for hours. Discussing and talking. So um it's a big job. It's a volunteer job. And we really needed a lot of different perspective and it was really welcome. So. I was thoroughly impressed. I thought, wow, I'm I'm glad I was an observer and thank you for inviting. Um at least the board members. I think it was it was, I really want to thank. You for doing that and including us to be observers and listen. It helps us to understand the process and and make a. A a decision in the end, too, you know, um to vote on it. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Shelley.
Yeah, thanks.
I think I'd like to ask just a question on the mapping. Um I'm in agreement with everyone else, by the way, about. Because I watched a lot of them on YouTube and I thought it was just. Very well managed and it was um. It's nice to see how the process plays out. All in all, so it was a very positive experience. One of the, and I'm trying, and this might be Steve, where he was showing the different maps and stuff, but there's like a little. Peninsula that's um sticks up around, I think it was Mark Twain. What? Can you explain a little bit more about that peninsula? Maybe I missed it. Um is there a special reason? I was talking about the the graphs. Is there a special reason why the peninsula sticks up on the uh? Northwest side or something northwest topside of Mark Twain?
I think it's the Milltown area.
The Milltown neighborhood?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um yeah, that's just because they're. Much of that neighborhood, uh I mean, they're. They can almost see Mark Twain from their their house.
Oh, I see.
Not a close to the Webb Lake, so to speak, but I mean, they're, that's just part of their school neighborhood.
Oh, right. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
And just to point out, the committee had that that. That wasn't a peninsula earlier in the process.
Oh, okay.
And the committee felt very strongly about that that by not making it. Look like a peninsula there, that we might be breaking up a neighborhood. Um in addition to not only the fact that 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 neighborhood is so close. To Mark Twain, but that that could have caused the neighborhood to get broken up. But as it looks on a map, it does look like this little peninsula that you've drawn.
Yeah.
So but that that's why, not to break up that neighborhood.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend. I think one of the regular ones and also one of the the listening sessions that occurred. Real well done. I I agree. I agree with everybody else. I thought that uh. RS2 Consulting did a fantastic job. I thought that, uh you know, the the participation was really positive. I think, you know, as far as where the maps ended up, I support what they came up with. It's as reasonable as anything. We all know that. You know, demographics change over years and you can only do the best you can do, given what you know today. And that's what they did. And I thought it was really. Really appropriate. And because we have an open enrollment district anyway. Everybody still does have opportunities if for whatever reason it just didn't line up. Exactly the way they wanted. And and I I really like that about our district and I think that it's proven to be very successful over. Certainly, all the time I've been aware of it and uh, you know, I I anticipate it'll continue to be a successful part of that. So. I anyway, I I see nothing at all to complain about in that process or in the results. So I thought that was a good job.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Well, of course, and and I'm at at your service to to answer any questions you have uh before the 8th and. And um to get you uh those answers in a timely manner. I know my team is more than willing to. To uh speak to you as well if you have something specific um to each one of them. And. Just wanted to say thank you to the district office team as well. And all the all the time and energy they put in behind the scenes to make sure that we're ready to go for each. Uh boundary meeting. A ton of work was put in in the planning phase, just to make sure we've thought of. You know, all the different things that the work group might need to feel that uh that they are making in a decision that they really. Felt that they owned. And so um just wanted to thank everybody behind the scenes on that as well.
All right, well, thanks. So anything else regarding the uh the K5 boundary recommendations? Okay, we'll anticipate that being on the regular March meeting agenda and. Guess that being the case, we've amended our agenda tonight. There is no executive session, which means we're ready to adjourn. So. Everybody have a great evening. Thanks.